Test one, two. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the Livonia City Livonia Chamber of Commerce Candidate Forum, featuring the candidates running for Livonia City Council this fall. My name is Dan West, I'm the President of the Livonia Chamber of Commerce, and I'll be the moderator for today's forum. This forum is designed to be an informational program to give Livonia's business communities and residents a chance to learn more about the candidates running for Livonia City Council in the election taking place on Tuesday, November 2nd. The Livonia Chamber of Commerce is a nonpartisan, nonprofit trade organization that represents some 950 businesses and organizations. The Chamber does not make any candidate endorsements. We want to thank everyone in the audience for joining us here in person at Livonia City Hall, great crowd today, appreciate it. We also have some people watching live via the Chamber Zoom link, we welcome those folks as well. The forum will be recorded and rebroadcast on the Chamber's social media and Livonia television platforms coming this week. It'll be on Livonia City Television actually as soon as this weekend, I just found out tonight. We also appreciate all the candidates for their participation this evening. Tonight, we will hold a 90-minute forum featuring the seven candidates on the ballot for this fall city council race, the elected seven-member legislative body for the city of Livonia. Based on recent census data, Livonia is Michigan's 10th-largest municipality with more than 95,000 residents. The Chamber's Government Affairs Committee established a format and the initial questions for this forum. Members of the audience are also invited to ask questions of the council candidates by submitting them on three-by-five cards and handing them to our volunteers at the end of the roll. We have Betsy on that side, and we have Dawn on that side. The submissions will be screened to prevent questions that are redundant, inaccurate, or personal, and to ensure they are focused on city issues. We will ask as many of the audience's questions as we can in the time allotted. Also, we thank the audience in advance for being respectful of each of the candidates and their responses, and to reserve all applause until the end of the forum. At this time, I ask everyone please silence or turn off their mobile devices during the forum. With that, it's time to introduce our seven candidates running for four seats on Livonia City Council. In alphabetical order, we have Kerry Budzinski, we have Dan Centers, we got Rob Donavick, Jim Jolly, Scott Morgan, Ken Overwater, and Laura Toye. Please welcome our candidates. The top three finishers in this race will earn a four-year term on the council, with the fourth-place finisher earning a two-year term on the council. The top overall vote getter will also earn the position of City Council President and Mayor Pro Tempore for the next two years. Each candidate will be invited to make one-minute opening statement and one-minute closing statement. The candidates will have up to one minute to respond to each question. Each candidate is allowed one 30-second rebuttal after they answered a question to respond to a comment on the same question by an opponent. The candidates were arranged in order of numbers drawn prior to this forum. Accordingly, we will rotate the order in which each candidate responds first. We have Laura Timouch and Sheri Davidak from our staff, who was in the front row, will serve as our timekeepers and inform the candidates of how much time they have left. With that, we will begin our forum with Mr. Ken Overwater with your opening one-minute statement, please.
Thank you all. I chose to run for city council because I wanted to serve the community in which my family lives. I believe in solutions, not fights. I believe in data, not memes, and doing work, not playing games. Strong neighborhoods and a strong community. That means proper zoning enforcement to encourage the development of empty malls, investing in resilient infrastructure that improves stormwater management and flooding so severe weather doesn't shut down our streets or damage our property, expanding the walkability and believability, or excuse me, bikability of neighborhoods, improving access to local businesses and recreational activities, and supporting local businesses with the resources they need to get started and thrive in Livonia. It means prioritizing accessibility and inclusion so that everyone can find a home here in Livonia, and ensuring safe neighborhoods by funding and training and competitive benefits for our first responders.
Thank you, Mr. Overwater, and I'll go to Dan Centers.
Thank you, Dan. First, thank you to you, the Chamber staff. We have a very strong Chamber of Commerce here in Livonia. They always do an excellent job on putting on events, and I'm sure this evening will be no different. I was born and raised here in Livonia. I've spent most of my life here, as has my wife, Janice. I started at Jackson Preschool, graduated from Churchill High School, was an Eagle Scout here in the city. The last seven years I've been on, seven-and-a-half years I've been on the school board here in Livonia. And this is a great city, I really love it here. We have an opportunity to make it even better, though. So I'm really excited tonight to discuss the upcoming challenges and opportunities the city has, and thank you for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Centers, and we'll now go to Laura Toye for her opening statement.
Thank you, Dan. Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Chamber, for organizing this very meaningful event and for all of you to attending. I've been honored to call Livonia home since childhood. I can't imagine a better area to grow up and live in. I attended Bentley High School as a young woman, and it's now the Recreation Center. So for those of you that are young, it was Bentley High School at one point. I was class president there, and I went also to Frost and Lincoln Elementary where the turkey farm butts up to. Yes, the turkeys did get out on playground. As a young woman, I started a business, Cardwell Florist, on Plymouth Road. I also served and had the opportunity and was elected to the city council as a president and City Treasurer, Schoolcraft Community College, as well as a state legislature, as both a state representative and a state senator. I look forward to tonight and hearing your questions, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toye, now we go to Robert Donavick.
Thank you, Dan West and the Chamber of Commerce for putting tonight's forum together, and to all the candidates for being here this evening. Growing up as a kid, I was fortunate enough to attend Johnson Elementary, Frost Middle School, and Churchill High School. I grew up playing on the same Little League Orioles football field as many of your children. I've served as a Reserve Police Officer on the Livonia Arts Commission and as a community volunteer. I am still in the Army National Guard, and during my first term on city council, my helicopter unit was deployed to the Middle East, where I continue to serve on city council. My council meetings typically took place between 2:00 and 5:00 a.m. my time. I continue to answer and assist residents with different situations and want to continue my work on city council. I am very dedicated to this job and to this community. I am honored to be running for reelection, so I continue to serve, and I look forward to all of your questions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donavick, we'll now go to Kerry Budzinski.
Hi, thank you also to the Chamber for hosting us tonight. My name is Kerry Budzinski, and I am running for Livonia City Council because this is my home. I've grown up here, and now I'm raising my two boys here with my husband, Dan. These are trying times and concerning for a lot of us, especially when you have young kids and you think about what their future is. I can't sit on the sidelines and hope for the best. I have to be active and engaged and get involved to serve my community. One thing that really bothers me is how divided we are as a country, and how we don't listen enough to each other and value our differences. Because differences should be valued, we're all different. I have two boys, and I call them Thor and Loki because they are so vastly different, but they raised exactly the same, and I love them the same. And so I want to listen to what other people have to say and work for the citizens of Livonia to make this a great home for everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Budzinski, now we turn over to Jim Jolly.
Thank you, thank you to the Chamber, thank you for all of you for being here today, for showing an interest in this election and our governance. So I'm a dad, I'm a husband, I'm an attorney. I've spent the last 15 years serving this community as a court officer, as a magistrate, and on the city council. I'm very proud of the things that we've done. We've created a neighborhood grant program, we've created Tadage and Trail, we've recently codified, or not codified, ratified, two public safety contracts so that we can attract the best and the brightest to serve our community. But there's still a lot more to do, and I know that we can do it together if we work together. We can talk about a lot of the things that need to get done, but we need to focus on how great of a community we have been and build from there. There is always an opportunity to get better as we go forward. We look at Livonia 21, the master plan. It's an opportunity to build and have more flexibility in the community we create for the next 50 years, for my family, for your family, to make sure that this remains home for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jolly, and I'll turn over to Scott Morgan for your opening statement.
Yes, hello, Scott Morgan. Thank you for inviting us tonight, it's a nice event here. I'd just like to tell you a little bit about myself. I spent five years in the Marine Corps. After I exited the Marine Corps, I ended up applying here at the city of Livonia, and I spent 25 years as a Livonia Police Officer, which was a great time in my life. I had plenty of opportunity to interact with the citizens. I had, I spent 10 years as a union president. And during that time, I just, I, we decided, my wife and I, that this is a great community. We really wanted to spend our entire life here. My family, my daughters grew up here, they went to schools in Livonia. I have an extensive knowledge of the city, and I currently serve on the zoning board. Thank you.
All right, now we'll go to our first question, and we'll start this with Mr. Centers, but everyone will answer this after him. What is your number-one goal if elected to Livonia City Council, Mr. Centers?
All right, if I have to just pick one, that's tricky, but I think one of the biggest things about our city is keeping our city really safe. We have really excellent public services all the way around. Police and fire are no different. They were, I think it was Mr. Jolly that referenced the contracts that the city council passed last session, and that is very powerful. It means there's a commitment to public safety here in Livonia, which the voters have already showed that they want that commitment by passing public safety mileage. We are short a lot of police officers still. That can lead to burnout, it can lead to a lot of frustrations. So I think addressing that is a big thing for our city. There's a lot of things, but if I have to pick one, I think having our public safety be strong is really important.
Ms. Toye.
Thank you very much. That's a hard question because there are several topics as we go through this election that we have to answer people's questions, and we give, try and give the same answers to all of them so you don't get called the flip-flopper, obviously. So we, we really need to concentrate on our residential and our commercial, and make sure that it balances within the master plan. And now that we're looking at Vision 21, I think some things will change for the better and improvement-wise as well. And I also believe that we need to have value added. But amongst that will be the communication we need to do with our residents and our businesses so that when we go to put something in, that we're cognizant of the fact that we have got to make sure we're listening to the resident that pays their tax, their tax bills on time, and those businesses that will either benefit or have maybe issues or concerns with it. That would be my answer, thank you.
Mr. Donavick.
Thanks, Mr. West. I think the biggest thing for me personally, while every issue is very important, is the revitalization of the east side of Livonia. And when you talk about crime, or you talk about blight, the vacant buildings, that's an important topic. We, as a community, do a lot of great things, but there are, I would say, a larger majority of your vacancies of higher crime statistics along some of that eastern corridor. So working with our law enforcement, working with our different property owners, how we, bringing interesting investments to that side of town, how you can alleviate some of those stresses. When you talk about attracting people to a community, one of the things they care about most is crime, and also making sure that there isn't blight or vacated buildings. So making sure that we try to minimize that, and also, there's a lot of positives that come that, come from that in terms of keeping your property taxes lower because we are able to attract more volume of businesses and more volumes of residents when you're more of an attractive community, so to speak. Thanks, Mr. West.
Ms. Budzinski.
Hi, my background is in constituent services. I worked for Senator Carl Levin for five-and-a-half years handling casework in the areas of Veterans Affairs, Social Security, Education, and Healthcare. And that would be my top priority on city council. It's working with residents, making sure that they know that I'm accessible when they have concerns, and understanding how our government works. I watch all city council meetings and study meetings and provide same-day summaries on social media so that people can find it easily. I attend committee meetings when I'm able to. I would love to see our committee meetings recorded as well so that people can watch them virtually on public television or YouTube. I think we need to make sure that people are engaged in our government. That's how democracy works, and I want to do my part to make sure people know that they're being listened to and that their problems are being addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Jolly.
Thank you. So there's not just one issue. The goal is always to make this remain home. And to make this our home and make us all feel comfortable here, we have to focus on many issues. Public safety, neighborhoods, city services, parks. There's a certain level of engagement that we have to create in this community to make sure that people like to be here, that they stay here, and that they thrive here. We've done a lot in regards to this over the course of the last couple of years, and there's a lot left to do. But I can point to the successes that we've had, such as Tadage and Trail. That's the first main construction project of a larger walk-bike Livonia. That's something that will keep people here. Further, we talked about public safety earlier. Mr. Centers also mentioned public safety. Those contracts have gone a long way. We currently have 25 police officers potentially in the pipe to be hired, going through the process. So we got to be safe here, we got to be comfortable here, and we have to be engaged here. This has to be the community that we all feel welcome in and home in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, if there, there is a lot of issues that the city needs to address, but one of the main things that I think that I would focus on is our fiscal responsibility while maintaining our city services. I think that's something that we need to focus on. If that is not maintained, then we'll have the problems throughout the city that we do have will just get worse. For instance, staffing levels. We need to bring up our staffing levels, and that has to be focused on so we can make sure that we maintain our city services. DPW, the Police Department, the Fire Department, they're all having staffing problems. And while we're being fiscally responsible, we also need to make sure that these, these services are staffed at 100% so we can continue to move forward and our city continues to be safe and a city that people want to move to.
Thank you, and Mr. Overwater.
So I've spent most of my career working in public service, and I would say if I had a number-one priority, it would be to ensure that Livonia continues to provide world-class public service to all the people who come here. When I first moved here, I was too cheap to pay for cable, so my father came and helped me put an antenna on my chimney, and we discovered that I had a yellow jacket nest in the ground. And then we discovered shortly thereafter that my father was allergic to yellow jacket stings, and so I had to call EMS. And they came, and I checked my phone after the fact, but they, they had got there in about five minutes, they were gone in nine minutes, and my dad was at the hospital and okay in 28 minutes. And it was a really close thing, and the yellow jackets actually got my dad a couple of years later, but if it weren't for those officers, those EMS workers and firefighters, my dad would have died two years earlier, he'd have never met my daughter. So I can't thank them enough, and I can't put a price on that, and I want to make sure that every single person who comes to Livonia gets the same level of service.
Thank you, we'll now go into our second question of the evening, and we'll start with Ms. Toye on this one. Explain to us how you effectively handled the situation where someone did not agree with you. Explain to us how you effectively handled the situation where someone did not agree with you, Ms. Toye.
No, that's never happened, Dan.
Oh, there's no discrimination at all.
Yeah. And that's one way to avoid it, is by some humor. Because when, you know, I was caucus chair of 58 members up in the House of Representatives, Dan knows what that's like, it's crazy, and you have people from all over the state. And you have to, it's kind of like herding frogs into the wheelbarrow, or, you know, cats, as they say. You have to be very patient, you have to know their background, you have to know their trigger points, and what makes them tick, and what issues are really important to them. And the same thing happens on the council. Where are my colleagues coming from on a given issue? Where is their comfort level? Where is it not? So that we can work together to keep this community the best possible place to live, work, and do business in, especially business. And so subsequently, you have to know that person's character and personality. And you want to, you want to, life is short, so you want to keep it nice and calm.
Thank you, Mr. Donavick.
Thank you. Me and Laura Toye get along all the time, we never fight. I think teamwork, it comes down to teamwork. I work with people I disagree with all the time. I have family I disagree with, I have friends I disagree with. And sometimes you handle those situations good, sometimes you handle those situations bad. But at the end of the day, teamwork and working alongside of folks, understanding where they're coming from, being respectful, talking about things that, that you think you believe in, and being passionate about those issues, but also understanding people's passion as well. Understanding where they're coming from and trying to get the job done. In city council, that's what it comes down to, is working with people that you disagree with on things. And it's been an honor so far to serve on city council because I've worked with people that come from different walks of life. I work with people that have different perspectives than I do. And ultimately, at the end of the day, you work hard to come to some sort of decision and do the best thing for your community.
Thank you, Mrs. Budzinski.
For a specific example, I'll use my father-in-law. I've known him for a dozen years, I've been his primary caregiver now for nine, and we disagree about virtually everything. And as I said, I've known him for a long time, so in my early twenties in particular, I was very passionate and could get very riled up about certain issues. And what I've learned over the years, and what I really appreciate what he's taught me, is humility and patience and recognizing the intent when somebody says things. He can say some insensitive things sometimes, but I know that he loves me, and I know that he cares, and that's always the common ground we come back to. And I think that that's what's really important when dealing with people who think differently than you. It's understanding where they're coming from and not assuming negative intent. Because I think we get on the defensive too easily, and we need patience and kindness.
Thank you, Mr. Jolly.
Thank you. So in this, in this role on city council, you're dealing with 95,000 people with different perspectives. Nobody agrees on everything. But when you speak to somebody and you listen to them and you make them feel heard, that goes a long way. I think when I talk to people about different issues in the city, I may have a different perspective than they do initially, but we can always find some sort of bond. And oftentimes, that bond is about a different perspective of what's best for Livonia, what direction we're going in. And sometimes my mind is changed, and sometimes their mind is changed. But ultimately, it's not about people agreeing with me or me agreeing with other people about any particular issue. It's about moving in a larger direction about what's best for Livonia. What are we doing as a community? How are we focusing our attention to build upon a great establishment, a great base here, so that we are an engaging community where people do feel welcomed and heard and like they have a voice? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, thank you. You know, that's, I spent 25 years as a police officer, so I've settled lots of conflicts and situations where people did not agree with me. A lot of the times, or most of the time, it's listening. You listen to what people have to say, and you resolve the conflict, no matter what that may be. And there's always a resolution that can be worked out. And when you listen to your community, you listen to your citizens, you're able to communicate with them, figure out what the problem is, and then you work on a solution to solve it. And that's what I've been doing for the last 25 years, is solving problems. So no matter what the problem is or what the situation is, we can fix it and working together.
Thank you, Mr. Overwater.
I actually agree with Mr. Morgan entirely. I think the important thing is listening and maintaining professionalism. I'm a public defender, so I have to deal with prosecutors and police officers who are paid to disagree with me. But I also have to deal with my clients who disagree with me all the time as well. They assume that I'm just out there to railroad them, and I have to convince them that I'm not and convince them that I'm here to help them. And the way you do that is by listening to them, listening to people, hearing what they have to say, validating the things that they have to say, and then addressing their concerns. Regardless of when someone disagrees with me, or they take a position different from the one that I take, I never, ever resort to histrionics. I don't resort to name-calling. I don't resort to any of those kinds of things that we see so frequently now. My job as an attorney is to maintain professionalism, and that's exactly what I'll do on city council as well.
Thank you, Mr. Centers.
Yeah, I think there's some really good answers up here, and I agree with what people are saying. Being on the school board the last seven-and-a-half years, there's nothing people are more passionate about than their children, and for a good reason. We have had the last seven-and-a-half years a number of different board members who have a number of different perspectives. And I've worked well with every one of them, and I'm really proud of that. And it doesn't mean I agree with everyone, but giving people respect, listening to what people have to say, it doesn't mean you're going to agree on things, but at least taking that perspective and not impugning people's motives goes a long way.
All right, thank you, we'll now go to our next question, we'll start with Mr. Donavick. What has been the most difficult thing for the city during the pandemic? And what are your ideas to help Livonia emerge from the pandemic's challenges going forward? What has been the most difficult thing for the city during the pandemic? And what are your ideas to help Livonia emerge from the pandemic's challenges going forward? Mr. Donavick.
I think so far, just dealing with COVID in general. I mean, I know our fire department did a really extraordinary job getting the vaccine out, but the goalposts changed frequently. People didn't know how to necessarily deal with it. Businesses are being shut down, people are told to stay inside. So it was difficult because you really never know, there was no blueprint, so to speak. And I think the city did exceptionally well at dealing with it, but you just never knew what was going to happen. You have a lot of people that are upset because they want to work, and then other people that couldn't work. You have people that have businesses that they want to stay open, but they couldn't stay open. You have your senior and vulnerable population that couldn't get out of our town and go to their normal functions, families that couldn't see each other. So it was very difficult for the city to handle. But I will say, I'd like to make the point that the city did a good job, from the meral staff to our firefighters, our police departments, and just as a community overall, handling that situation because it was so unknown all the time.
Thank you, Mrs. Budzinski.
I think the, I agree, the biggest challenge with COVID was the uncertainty. And I also think it was the isolation that we all experienced from, you know, at certain points, not being able to go, leave our homes, but then also not necessarily knowing when it was okay to go to events or having the traditional events that help bring us together and unite us, like out, you know, parades and other community activities. So I think moving forward, we need to just embrace more of those. I'm glad that a lot of them came back. We had outdoor concerts, we've had outdoor storytimes. We have our Fall Festival to look forward to next weekend, and Halloween events and Christmas events moving forward. And we need to focus on making those events comfortable for everyone to be at as we're still navigating the uncertainty of COVID and what comes next.
Thank you, Mr. Jolly.
Thank you, so it's great to see all of you here today, obviously, right? So just about a year ago, a year and a half ago, we weren't sure that these things were ever going to come back, right? We were hopeful, but we weren't sure. From a city's perspective, we obviously had different services, different areas that were disrupted. But we effectively moved staffing priorities and personnel around the city to serve the community where they were best needed. A good example of that is Livonia Cares. Livonia Cares was organized by people within City Hall and the Parks and Rec Department, where we collected and distributed medical supplies, PPE, to different medical facilities in Livonia who maybe didn't have what they needed to fight the virus. From a personal perspective, we can all kind of understand that it was a very confusing time for many of us, right? We didn't understand what we were doing or how we were going to get through it, but I think the bonds of the community brought us together. I'll speak for myself in saying that, you know, my family, we had some long-distance conversations across the street between our neighbors, and little things like that kept us going. But I think the city responded well.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to say that our city did an amazing job during this last year and some change because this pandemic has been very difficult on everyone. And there's, there's nothing we can do to change the past, but our hospitals, our police and fire, and it was just, they did an amazing job during this pandemic. And I, I can't say enough about them. The, the things that we have, our accessibility to our hospitals, to our emergency services in the city, have just been amazing over this last year. And I think as we progress, things that we have, the outreach, the community outreach, the senior center, the things that we do for the seniors, it's just, it's above, it's above and beyond. And they have a great community here, and we want to keep this up and get through this pandemic.
Thank you, Mr. Overwater.
So I think the biggest difficult thing that we've been dealing with is a lack of trust. People don't trust what they read, they don't trust what they hear, they don't trust what the government tells them, they don't trust what anyone tells them. And, and it's difficult to build that with people and try and find solutions that work for everyone. A friend of mine is a principal of an elementary school, and he was sharing with me how parents were mad at him no matter what he did, and I told him, I said, "You're not, not only are you not going to make half of the people happy, you're not going to make anybody happy, you're going to make like 2% of the people happy." Because COVID safety is analogous to the way George Carlin described speeding. You ever notice that anybody who drives faster than you is a maniac, and anyone who drives slower than you is an idiot? And the same thing is true, anyone who wears a mask when you wouldn't is scared, and anyone who, you know, does- Anyone who wears a mask when you wouldn't is scared, and anyone who, you know, doesn't wear a mask is a COVID idiot. And we just assume these things, and we need to stop doing that. We need to find trust in each other again, and we need to find trust in the people who, you know, have our best interests at heart and the professionals that serve our interests. Thank you.
Mr. Centers.
Yeah, I, there's a lot of good answers up here. For me, the hardest thing about COVID-19 was the building the plane while flying it aspect of it. Early on, we had trouble getting people masks, especially our first responders, our hospital workers. As legislative staffer, I worked a lot with businesses and folks like in the community nonprofits trying to get the resources where we needed to. Then it's PPP loans for our businesses, make sure they got the loans they needed and could keep running. Then after that, it was, on the school board side, it was decisions about keeping kids in the classroom, trying to get them in the classroom safely, navigating that. When vaccines came available, making sure people had opportunities to get that. So we always had to adjust, and when we thought we knew what was going to happen next, we always got thrown for a loop. So that was the most challenging thing, I think, but I'm hoping we're now finally over the hump.
And Ms. Toy.
Thank you very much. The biggest thing was the change. It was a very spooky, scary time. It was and is now a new normal. We face nuances that we never had to face before. Our police, our fire, our administration, our staffs here at City Hall. There's still, you know, caution, a lot of caution and a lot of beliefs of, did it really happen, did it not happen, is it happening, whatever. One of my solutions would be that we need a hotline so that people with some mental health problems and/or people that have some medical problems perhaps could call a hotline and be directed to a good resource. And I think we have the capability to do that here within City Hall and partner with some other entities around town. I also run a business, and it was very difficult. I had to shut down for a month and a half and try and help employees gain access to a few dollars so that they wouldn't go out on unemployment and things like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rebuttal? Okay, Mr. Centers.
Let's have a rebuttal and more of a, but I am using my rebuttal and more of a, and, and that really sparked something in my head that I didn't know about till recently. And that there, there is a, Higuro Health runs a crisis center that's in our city. It's called COPE, and they are open 24 hours a day. They serve people who are in immediate crisis. And till recently, I didn't even know they were there. The work they do is amazing. So I agree, we can, we can work maybe with them, involve the city somehow. But I just wanted people to know that resource is out there.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go into the next question now, and this will start with Mrs. Buzinski. And that question is, how do you see the local business climate today? And what should be the role of the city in interacting with the business community? How do you see the local business climate today? And what should be the role of the city in interacting with the business community? Mrs. Buzinski.
I mean, I think the business climate is changing in a lot of different ways. I mean, naturally, quote-unquote, outside of the pandemic, we already saw a shift into e-commerce and less brick-and-mortar businesses. Now with the pandemic, that I think accelerated in a lot of ways. And so supporting our businesses and seeing what, what do they need to meet these new challenges is really important. And again, I think that comes from dialogue. I am not a business owner, so I don't have those answers. But it's, it's listening to members of the chamber and representatives from the chamber and learning what is important. It's also about workforce development. I think that's, you know, employment is an issue that we're hearing a lot about, is that people can't find workers. Well, what are those challenges? And how can we best support our residents who are looking for work? Skills training and then helping our businesses make those final connections.
Thank you, Mr. Jolly.
Yeah, so obviously, pre-pandemic, we were already facing a retail change in terms of the Amazon effect on our local stores and businesses. With the pandemic, we've experienced something similar with our office space. Livonia has held up quite well in our industrial area. We have held up quite well in regards to a lot of our different sectors. But there's a lot we can do to kind of engage the community around these issues. And one of those is really, the city can act as a bridge for providing employees, for utilizing the resources and the skills that are here in the community and kind of putting them in touch, not only with the businesses that are here now, but the businesses that we hope to bring here. A big thing that we've been working on for a few years is the Livonia Vision 21 Master Plan that allows us a lot more flexibility in terms of what kind of businesses we bring to our community, what they can do in our community. We will not be creating an unrecognizable Livonia, but it will be a Livonia that is better prepared to meet the challenges of today and those to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, thank you. You know, I think Livonia, as long as I've been here, works very well with the businesses. I would always go out and talk to business owners and keep an open line of communication. And Livonia, as it is right now, works with most businesses and to find out what their issues are, how we can solve their problems, and we have an open line of communication. I know our building department, they work closely with all the businesses. The Livonia 21 Plan opens up more areas of, opened up the ordinances for them a little bit to allow them to have a little leeway with the, with their business. I think, I think we work very well with local businesses and, but we always can work harder. And once we are able to communicate with them, I think we'll be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Overwater.
So I think the climate is uncertainty, and I think we've all described why. It's not just the pandemic, but it's just the changing role of business in our community and changing over time how we interact with that. The role of the city, I think, is to support the businesses that add value to our community. I'm a big believer in neighborhood businesses. It's what I love about my neighborhood, it's what I loved about other neighborhoods I've lived in and other places. I like my local hardware store, I like my local restaurants, I like my local bar. And I think we need to continue to support all of those businesses in these neighborhoods because they're what add value to the places that we live. And those are the kinds of things that attract people to come and live in those neighborhoods, which is something that we need to do in order to continue to be a thriving and growing city.
Thank you, Mr. Centers.
Yeah, our city has always put a lot of focus on our business community, rightfully so, because it is really important in our community. And, you know, when I talk to people who are small business owners in our community, over and over, I hear a lot about, about personnel, they talk about workforce development. And that is something that was before the pandemic, but now seems really, really stark. We have a lot of resources in Livonia. In the school district, we have a big career technical center that trains really high need positions coming out. Schoolcraft College has this huge manufacturing center. They have associate's degrees in all sorts of things. We have a university in our city, Madonna. I think connecting people with the resources is what might be missing a little bit. So I would really love to see our city really be that connection to make sure that people are getting the resources they need and helping our businesses thrive.
Thank you, Ms. Toy.
Thank you. Partnerships, I think, is crucial as we, as we move along in this new environment. But red tape within our different structures needs to be more timely. I see petitioners coming into the city, and they're on an agenda for the end of October, end of November. Some businesses need to get going. I mean, we want to create a safe environment, safe buildings, but by the same token, I think we can cut some of the red tape that we do. We do a wonderful job in City Hall, I'm not knocking it. I'm just saying, maybe we can look at that as the future goes on here. Our public safety is superior to none. I've had trouble at my store down on Plymouth Road in recent times. They were there within an instant. It, it's just amazing. But I strongly believe in shopping local. When you go out, patronize those small businesses and those larger businesses within your community. They're the ones funding and hiring your children and funding baseball outfits and things like that. Thank you.
And Mr. Donavich.
Well, first thing I do is join the Chamber of Commerce here in Livonia. Little plug for you. You can talk to Dan West about that. But really, small businesses specifically are the backbone of our economy. And when you think about what the city can do to stay out of the way of business, it comes down to fiscal responsibility, keeping property taxes low, minimizing fees and, and trying to get rid of local regulatory burdens. So keeping government sort of out of the way of small business, because it's already so difficult to own a small business or a business in general, large or small, in today's world. You have so many challenges that you have to face, whether it be COVID, whether it be staffing, whether it be shortages on parts. I was just talking to a local business yesterday, and they're building so much inventory right now in anticipation for their, their customers to order parts, but they just can't order them right now. So any, any way that the city can help stay out of the way of local small businesses and large businesses is something that can make them successful.
All right, thank you. And now we will go to our next question, and we will start with Mr. Jolly. Livonia Chamber of Commerce has been supportive of diversity, equity, and inclusion matters in the business community for several years. How can the city make more progress in this area? The Livonia Chamber has been supportive of diversity, equity, and inclusion matters in the business community for several years. How can the city make more progress in this area? Mr. Jolly.
Well, I think it all starts with listening and understanding the perspectives and the things that different people feel and possibly experience when they come to our community. I can speak from my own perspective. I obviously think that this is a welcoming community. I think that is shown through our community events, through our neighborhoods, through our businesses here, that all people are welcome. There is something to be added when we talk about different perspectives, people from different areas. And they bring a different vibrancy to our community. They, they bring a different perspective in regards to what we have been and what we could be. And it's always good to have those perspectives, even if they're between somebody who's been here for a long time and somebody who's relatively new and has moved here. But all in all, I think the city has done a great job. I think we have a professional city, professional people across the board. But I think it, you know, we can always listen and we can always communicate better, that we are a welcome community.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, I think that the chamber is a, is an example of our business community and how we come together and we solve problems. And I think that reaching out to our business owners and finding out what their problems are and assist them in fixing those problems, that is something that we need to do. And we need to continue to reach out to our businesses and find out if there's anything we can do to help them. I think that as we move forward, our businesses, we want more, we want to attract more businesses and we want to keep them happy. But we also want to keep them within the guidelines that the city sets as far as the ordinances and the other state laws that we have. So I think that conversation, keeping the conversation going is the best way to continue to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Overwater.
So I, I also think that Livonia is a welcoming community, but I'm a cis white man, so of course it was welcoming to me. I have no idea if it's welcoming to people of more diverse backgrounds because I'm not one of them. So the first step is to actually listen. It's to talk to people and get an impression as to how they feel and how they feel welcomed in this community. But I think there are things that we can do to show the world and show the rest of Michigan that, who we are and that we are a welcoming community. And the first thing that I would suggest is we need to pass a non-discrimination ordinance. We need to put it on the books that we, as a city, will not discriminate against people based on their gender identity, based on their race, based on their religion, based on any of those factors, and that we won't do business with businesses that do that. We do something like that, and then we're actually taking a stand and we're showing people that we're not just talking about it, but we're actually doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Centers.
Yeah, I want to first compliment the chamber for making diversity, equity, and inclusion a priority. I've been to events that you've hosted, and I think they're, they're well-done and thoughtful. We have seen it in other places in the community too, with our school districts, our universities, some of our major employers. Masco, for instance, has been someone who has really been diving into this space. But I would also agree with Mr. Overwater that a lot of our neighbors have passed non-discrimination ordinance. If you go to Westland or Farmington Hills or Plymouth. So I would agree with him that this would be a great addition to our community and make people feel welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Toy.
Thank you, Dan. As been said, we want to be a welcoming community, and we have been. That's one reason I went into business for myself. I felt it was important to determine where my business was going to fit in into the greater scheme of where I live, play, and work. And it's important to me that we service all people regardless. We do weddings, we do funerals, we do very emotional work, believe it or not, day in and day out. Here, we've trained staff, and we've looked at that. The council has had a resolution in regards to discrimination, and we've looked at that. We've heard many. Our Human Relations Commission is still studying various aspects of the whole issue, if you will. And I, I want to honor them when they get that completed to know what exactly they have in it because we've yet to see it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Donavich.
Thanks, Dan. We as a society, not just the city, have to get past judging people by what they look like or where they come from. I'm the son of immigrants, came here in the 1980s with nothing, and this country welcomed us and gave us the opportunity of a better life. So regardless of who somebody is, a person's character is what matters, and that's how you should treat people. Specifically partnerships with community organizations like the Chamber. Most recently, you held an event and worked with business owners from all across the community and people from all across the community, and you really got to learn a lot and have those sorts of discussions. So when you talk about moving forward as a community, I think Livonia does a good job, but there's always improvement in anything we do in our life. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Buzinski.
So I think actions speak louder than words. So while we can always, and we are a welcoming community, I mean, this is home for all of us who are here, and we love the city, and that's why we want to serve our communities. But for some people and some groups of people, they don't feel welcomed in Livonia like we do, and we need to recognize that, and we need to look at ourselves and say, how can we show them that we care, that we are a welcoming community, that they are welcomed here and can feel confident in that? And I believe a non-discrimination ordinance would do that, and I would love to see one passed here in Livonia.
All right, thank you. We'll now go to our next question, and we'll start with Mr. Morgan on this one. Do you support raising Livonia's property tax mileage to fund Livonia's Vision 21 program in building new municipal buildings such as a new city hall, police station, or fire headquarters? Do you support the raising of Livonia's property tax mileage to fund Livonia's Vision 21 program, which would include building new municipal buildings such as a new city hall, police station, or fire headquarters? Mr. Morgan.
Well, first of all, I would have to take a look at a plan that is set up and how that would affect our community. In general, I am not for raising taxes. The city of Livonia has one of the lowest tax rates, if not the lowest tax rate, in Wayne County, and we would like to keep it that way. With that being said, sometimes there has to be some type of adjustments, but I am not in favor of that in general. So we'd have to take a look at this Livonia 21 Plan and make sure it does not put us into any type of debt. We don't want to have any unfunded liability that the, the city cannot take care of on its own. We do have other ways. There's, there's federal money, there's state money that can help us out with. But I am not in favor of putting the bill on the citizens of the city of Livonia. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Overwater.
Thank you. I agree with what Mr. Morgan said. I would have to see a plan and have to make a decision. My lodestar, as far as making these kinds of decisions, is always going to be, what does the most good for the most people? All right? And raising somebody's taxes doesn't frequently do much good for anybody. And as a person who pays property taxes in this city, I certainly don't want to see mine raised. So before I would even consider raising taxes, I would want to make sure that we have looked at every other possible opportunity to raise the revenue needed in order to do the things that we need to do. And if it's not possible to do that, then it might be time to consider that we simply just can't afford to do some of the things that we want to do, and we have to make some hard choices there. But at the end of the day, I think we have to take a serious look at what the plan is and decide exactly what makes the most sense for the most people.
Thank you, Mr. Centers.
Yeah, I, I would do everything I can to make sure that we don't have to raise taxes. I, I talked to a lot of people, I've gone door-to-door, and there's a lot of seniors in our community who are on fixed income. our community who are on fixed incomes. It is very hard for them to absorb any kind of increases. When the water bill goes up, it's hard for them to absorb it. So we talked about all the bad things that came out of COVID earlier, but some of the good things are that there are a lot of federal and state resources right now, and we have to be aggressive in securing that. I know Mayor Brosnan had worked to secure a few million dollars for the senior center already. We need to do more of that. If we're aggressive, can do a lot of what we want to do by taking advantage of this terrible situation that has created opportunities for our city.
Thank you. Ms. Toy?
Certainly. Yeah. You know, the overall plan for the city comes into what buildings need to stand and perhaps what buildings need to come down. To raise taxes isn't always the answer. In my small business, I pay 17 different taxes. I mean, it's outrageous, the amount of taxes we charge people in small businesses. You wonder why you have empty strips, Centers? There's a good one right there. 17 different taxes. We just received $8.9 million from the federal government from the Federal American Rescue Act. That is not only federal money, the state is flush, correct me if I'm wrong, with a lot of money. And people I talk to up there say, we have a lot of money, so make sure you guys get up here and get some of that money. And I know our mayor is keen to that, so we should be in good stead. And our budget is healthy here in Livonia. Over $65 million in our general fund. We've done well, and we will continue to do well with keeping within our budget.
Thank you. Mr. Donavich?
Livonia has a good history of keeping low property taxes because of fiscal responsibility. So raising property taxes is not the key. Raising another millage is not the answer. Sometimes we can't have everything we want because things cost money. When you talk about the American Rescue Plan, it's trillions of dollars that's been funded from the federal government to local municipalities, to individual people, trillions of dollars that we, as taxpayers, already have to pay back. So when you talk about increasing taxes more, people on fixed incomes, where's the money going to come from? Not everyone is rich, not everybody can afford more and more taxes. So you have to take that in consideration, that some people can't afford eight more dollars here, 10 more dollars here, because that adds up. And at some point, people just can't afford to live in these communities if the only answer is always to raise taxes.
Thank you. Ms. Budzinski?
We need transparency and accountability for our government. You know, as we're talking about the senior center, it's been brought up. The estimated cost for a new building attached to the rec center is $13 million. The federal money that's been secured for that is $3 million. That's a $10 million gap, and we need to recognize and talk about that as a community. And as we look forward to Vision 21, we need to look at the facilities and what our budget is currently funding. Our libraries get $0 from the city budget. It operates solely on a mill. We put $0 towards storm water system, and we know how many of our neighborhoods are suffering from flooding damage. We need to look at funding what we already have responsibilities for before we look truly at Vision 21. So we need to have a community conversation about what money we have coming in and where it's going.
Thank you. Mr. Jolly?
So this is a very preliminary situation here. We haven't seen a plan. We have no idea of what buildings would need to be replaced, what the cost for that would be. But we do have multiple ways of funding this. We have a history of building two new buildings in the last 15 years here in Livonia without raising property taxes at all. We built a new courthouse, and we just built a new DBW building, and that was through the municipal bonding process, which allows us to pay for projects in a very financially responsible way over 20, 30 years. Obviously, nobody's ever in favor of raising taxes. We would never be making those decisions as a city council alone. We would be having a community conversation in regards to that. And if there was a new millage to support Vision 21, that would go to the voters. It would be a conversation like we had for the road program here in Livonia that takes care of our roads, for the public safety millage. This would be a broader conversation, and it would be something that we discussed as a community. So I can't predict the future, but we would have that conversation together.
All right. Thank you. We'll now go to our next question, and this one will start with Mr. Overwater. And this question, do you believe Livonia should allow Airbnb short-term rentals to operate in Livonia? And if so, what should be expected of the property owner? Do you believe Livonia should allow Airbnb short-term rentals to operate in Livonia? And if so, what should be expected of the property owner? Mr. Overwater?
You found a prickly one for me. Typically, again, my philosophy is what does the most good for the most people. So that's a situation where I would have to take a lot of time to listen to residents. I think a neighborhood-by-neighborhood approach might be appropriate for that, but I can't say at this point that I would necessarily support that or be against it. I would need more information from a lot of different things. What would be most important, though, is if we're going to allow Airbnbs in our neighborhoods, there needs to be strict regulations in terms of what people do and how they need to care for the property. We need to make sure that they are being closely watched by our police department to ensure that they are in no way infringing upon the private and quiet enjoyment of residents' homes, because I know that's a concern that a lot of people have. And if we're ever going to allow that sort of thing, or if I were ever to support it, I would need very strong assurances that that wasn't the case.
Thank you. Mr. Centers?
Yeah. We have to be thoughtful and listen to residents. A couple of people that I have talked to that have Airbnbs in their vicinity, they've complained about things like noise. They've complained about property upkeep, and things along those lines that we actually do have ordinances for. So we have to be thoughtful about how we put ordinances in place and how we enforce them, but also continue to be thoughtful. This is a business that is relatively new. I imagine it's going to evolve and grow as we go on through our community. So seeing how that affects our community and other communities is really important.
Thank you. Ms. Toy?
Thank you. Council struggled with the Airbnb question for quite a while, and I think we're going to revisit it again, because we've had several issues come to all of us, whether it be email or phone or whatever, where some of them are working out real well, and there's just some problems here and there, and we've got to straighten those out. Our law department did a masterful job of creating some of the nuances that were happening, and as we looked at it more, we weren't ready to adopt those. So we didn't put our arms around those, and perhaps we could have or should have. Hindsight is 2020, but we do need to revisit this whole issue again. And there's good ones and there's bad ones, and that's basically what I can say about them.
Thank you. Mr. Donavich?
Airbnb is something that's a relatively new market, and it's been tricky for cities and states across the country. I know the state has been talking about different regulations on Airbnb, but us locally at the city level, I think a good idea is just treating them like rental units, rental properties. You have to have some regulation on them to preserve the community tranquility of the community, but also striking the balance of protecting private property rights, because somebody does own that. However, when you own that property and now you turn it into more of a commercialized property, you have to follow strict guidelines, because you are coming into a community and renting it, whether it be a day, a month, or multiple months, you now are entering into more of a commercial style home. So you need to protect the private property owners next door, but you also need to protect the private property rights of the owner that owns that property.
Thank you. Ms. Budzinski?
I agree with everyone else. I mean, it's a tricky issue. You know, I'm all for progress and for embracing technology and all the fun and not-so-fun things the 21st century has to offer us. But we also have a certain community values. You know, I love Livonia, but we are not necessarily a tourist destination if you're looking to, you know, travel from in from out of state. We have a lot of great reasons to come here, of course. But, you know, what is the value and what are the bad things about Airbnb rentals? So I think we do need to take a strong look at it and really give a lot of credence to what residents have to say, because it's really going to affect their day in and day out versus somebody who's just coming in for a day or two.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Jolly?
So as of now, these short-term rentals are only allowed in a very small parameter, at least legally speaking. I come at it from the perspective of, I have been fighting about this and talking about this for the last year or so, maybe a little bit more than the last year. When I bought my house in a residentially zoned neighborhood, I expected to have a certain stability of neighbors around me. Whether they were renting or they were buying, they weren't going to be transient, coming and going on a daily basis. And I think that's where I'll hang my hat. It's fine to have hotels in commercially zoned areas. It's fine to have bed and breakfasts and that sort of thing in commercially zoned areas. But when we talk about residential neighborhoods, that's something special. This is our home. We have a motto that is "Families First." That's the neighborhoods. That's stability. So listen, it's only a matter of time before the state preempts us here. So while we can, I think we should continue to regulate this and keep it out of the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, I've actually had several questions on this throughout the last few months, and it's an interesting topic, because I've used Airbnbs before when I've went out of state, and they seem to work out fairly well. So I would have to say, in our community, that I would have to see what the regulations look like to consider any such endeavor with Airbnb. So I have looked into it a little bit. However, I'm not very versed in, as the current city council members are. So I would have to say that I would have to look into it further and have more information before I made any type of decision on that.
Mr. Jolly, a 30-second rebuttal?
Yeah. So not a rebuttal, but adding more information here. And my colleagues who are currently on council can attest to this. All you have to do is look at the emails and the pictures that we get sent by residents who are dealing with these problems on a daily basis. That's it. You wouldn't want to see these things on your street in front of your house that we've seen. There are probably some good examples in the city, and I feel bad for the people who are operating those good examples. But nobody should have to deal with the bad examples. That's it.
All right. Thank you. We're about an hour into this. How about an easy question? Moment 11 here.
What?
All right.
What do you consider easy?
Yeah, really.
We're going to start with Mr. Centers.
Are you a Michigan and Michigan State fan?
No, not going to go there.
I'll happily answer that.
What was your first concert? The first concert you went to? Let's start with Mr. Centers. 30 seconds. You can set the scene if you want.
You're going to age Laura Toy.
Don't say Frank Sinatra.
30 seconds.
It was not Frank Sinatra. So actually, I think it was the Red Hot Chili Peppers, which was a very fun concert, except I was actually on the edge of like a very large crowd surfing, and I got kicked in the head really hard. So if I don't recall that being my first concert, maybe that's why.
That explains why you're running for office.
Thank you. Ms. Toy, your first concert?
The Eagles, if anybody remembers them. It wasn't my choice. It was not my choice. It was his choice. It wasn't my choice. I would have rather seen the Beatles myself, but tickets were a little expensive.
So thank you, Mr. Donavich.
Oh, boy. Oh, man. I'm an old man, 29, so the Beastie Boys. My mom won tickets on the radio, and she brought her sons with her to a Beastie Boys concert. I don't even, my dad knows. Sorry, Dad, if you never heard about that, but the Beastie Boys is my first concert.
You just texted me and told me you're grounded. Mrs. Budzinski, your first concert?
NSYNC. So when I was nine years old, it was the Boy Band battle, and I just picked NSYNC. And so when I, my mom, you know, she went all out to get me these tickets, and we're up in the Pals Raptors, and it's going on, and they play a song. I'm like, oh, I know this song. She's like, I thought they were your favorite band. I said, I actually didn't know any of their songs. I just randomly picked my group at school.
Mr. Jolly?
So my mom and dad took me to some incarnation of the Beach Boys at the Fox Theater, maybe when I was like 10 years old or something like that. So I don't know. But my wife recently took me to a Green Day concert, and that was pretty awesome. So we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan?
It was Dolly Parton. I think it was 1987 or '86, right in that area.
Classic.
Nothing more to add?
She's a great singer.
Still a queen.
And Mr. Overwater, your first concert?
On my 13th birthday at the Masonic Temple, I saw Pearl Jam with my dad. That was back when Pearl Jam was in a spat with Ticketmaster, and you couldn't buy the tickets. You had to get them in a raffle. It's my favorite band, and my mother got every single person she knew to try and enter their names. And it was actually my mom's name that won, and like she found it, like they printed it in the newspaper, I think. And so for my 13th birthday, dad, who hated that music, you know, took me to the Masonic, and we saw Pearl Jam. I still have the bootleg t-shirt he bought, too. Doesn't fit, but I have it.
Well, I thank each of you for engaging us with that question. Now we'll go back to something a little bit more...
Was that my question?
No.
Now, back to a serious one. Sorry. In this question, we'll go to Ms. Toy. In what ways do you think Livonia can attract young entrepreneurs, business incubators, and/or venture capital funds?
Well, you know, I think we have to partner with our schools more. We have several colleges here, both community and otherwise. We need, when I was council president, I had brought in those higher institutions of education to pick their brains and say, what are your students telling you? What do we need to do in our city to partner with you in order to make it more conducive for them? And, you know, people have talked about nightclubs here, but that takes somebody to open it and pay for it and find the property to do it in, and it might not be a bad idea. Perhaps a few concerts with Pearl Jam and things might be the answer. I don't know. But certainly, I think the city has a youth commission, and we've done several things with them, and partnering and collaboration is going to be the key to success with our young people and listening to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Donavich?
So recently, I had the really great opportunity to tour a young entrepreneur's new business. It's called E&amp;E Tech, and he does really advanced technology work with different businesses, both large and small, and he's 24 years old. You talk about attracting young entrepreneurs to a community. Livonia is the best place to do that. We have a huge, robust commercial corridor. You have smaller units, strip mall vacancy, that working with those landlords, working with that business community, you can attract those sorts of new businesses. Working with your private institutions, the community partnerships, working with the Career Center, and LPS has. So there's a couple of different ways that you can attract those young entrepreneurs. But just being the community we are, I think we already are actually doing that.
Thank you. Ms. Budzinski?
So this spring, well, so for my day job, I run Little Guy Detroit, which is the largest media company for families looking for things to do. So I know everything that's going on business-wise in southeast Michigan. And over the last year, I met a business owner out of Ohio who's been in business for a dozen of years, and because of the pandemic, she was looking to expand into the Michigan market. And so she reached out to me and said, where should I go? And I said, Livonia. You've got to come to Livonia. She has a character rental party. And I said, we are strategically located, and we're 20 minutes from Detroit, and we're 20 minutes from Ann Arbor and the Woodward Corridor and Novi, and this is where you need to be. And she's never been here, you know, in Michigan. So she's like, all right, let's do this. It was very hard for her to find rental space in Livonia, which any time I tell somebody in Livonia, they're always like, how is that possible? I see so many "for lease" signs. We need to make it an easier process. She almost went to Canton, because they have an easier entry to final opening process than we do. So that's step one, is making it easier for people to start businesses here.
Thank you. Mr. Jolly?
So I work at Lawrence Tech, and one of the initiatives that we started at Lawrence Tech is a new business accelerator in partnership with the city of Southfield. And it was a center, it is a center, that provides business and legal resources, office space, and business mentoring to startups. Mostly, these, to this point, have been tech startups. They've produced some interesting products. We've founded quite a few different companies to come out of this. There's no reason why Livonia's not doing that as well. We have Madonna, we have Schoolcraft, we have a vibrant business community, and the industrial corridor. Ideally here, we would be utilizing some of these vacant strip malls and facilities to have little zones where there was a lot of creativity going on, a lot of small businesses filling those shops. The thing that stands in our way oftentimes is there are people who own those, and we can't force them to do anything they don't want to do. So we need to start that conversation, have that dialogue, to get that process rolling, so that we can create these little vibrant spots where, the good example here, and I'll say it quickly... Corktown was reinvigorated by slows, and everything built up from there. We just need to start it with one.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, I think our community is very well situated in Michigan, where we have lots of flow of traffic, 96 to 75, 14. We have a lot of ways in, a lot of ways out. We're close to the airport. There's a lot of business outreach in this area. Schoolcraft College has a lot of programs. College has a lot of programs, Madonna. I think with our great location, and if the city put together a business outreach plan that we could look into, we could probably get a lot of people in here and start filling some of those vacant businesses and bring people back to our city to make sure that we continue to move forward.
A rebuttal from Ms. Buzinski.
Not, not a rebuttal, but I did want to add, particularly with young entrepreneurs, is having pop-up opportunities. You know, brick and mortar is a big responsibility and a lot of work on both the city end and a business person's end. But having pop-up opportunities, like we had our food truck rally and concert at the Recreation Center, including market space, so that businesses could introduce themselves to the committee, community, start, you know, generating business, so that they can transition to permanent space, is one way we can do it as well.
Thank you, Mr. Overwater.
Yeah, I agree with all the things that, really, that people have said. I think, I think about this, and I think you kind of need two things. First, you need to have the, the bones in place, i.e. the location, the people here, so that a place is a good business investment. But then additionally, you, you need to have something that attracts people to that particular area, kind of a cool factor. And what Mr. Jali said about slows, that was the first thing, and then other things built around that. So what we need to be encouraging are small businesses that are value adds for neighborhoods, that attract people to want to continue to come to that restaurant, to come to that bar, to come to that store, to come to that grocery store, or whatever it may be. And then that in turn encourages people to want to live in that neighborhood, and then more people are there, and these things build out over time. So it's all really easy to say, and the solutions aren't always easy to find, but it, it starts with trying to find, talking to as many entrepreneurs and young entrepreneurs as possible, and trying to solve the pain points that they need solved.
And thank you, and Mr. Centers.
Yeah, I, I think there is opportunity. If you look at where a lot of the venture dollars are going, it's Detroit, it's Ann Arbor, and we're right, nestled right in between there. Looking at the city of Detroit, they invested in Tech Town Detroit through Wayne State University, and that was a big driver in creating a technology infrastructure there. You talk about what Jim said about Lawrence Tech, those kinds of activities and those kinds of programs, we need to spark, we need to put investment in if we want to see that. We need to make it a point of emphasis if we want companies like that to come here. You got to build the energy and the excitement, or else they'll continue to go to places like Ann Arbor and Detroit and overlook us.
All right, now, that'll be it for that question. I think we have time for one more question before we get into our closing statements, and we will start with Mr. Donavich with this question. What is the one thing you want implemented in the next four years to work towards a more environmentally sustainable Livonia? What is the one thing you want implemented in the next four years to work toward a more environmentally sustainable Livonia? Mr. Donavich.
I think as we, from a council perspective, oftentimes you're looking at zoning, businesses come to you from different site plan approval processes. I'd love to see an emphasis on businesses moving forward as they redevelop buildings or develop new buildings. I'd like to see the innovation, that focus on the new, the new equipment, the new materials. I understand using the cheaper, cheaper materials is, is more cost-effective, so to speak, for a business, but I think we can set the tone as a, as a city government that when you bring your business to our community, and I think we do do a good job of this, but continue to have those conversations to set those standards high when you're coming to Livonia to hopefully redevelop an old building and kind of bring it back to life. They're using more modern materials and giving it, giving it a look that's going to attract some of those young entrepreneurs, some of those, those people that have different mindsets. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Buzinski.
Well, first and foremost, plant more trees. Trees are very important to our community and to our residents, so we need to make sure that we're planting trees to replace the ones that we're losing, that we're planting more trees, just because they're beautiful and people really value them here. We also need to work with businesses that are coming into parking lots. It sounds very basic, but there's a lot of work that can be done to make them more environmentally friendly. Park in Plymouth is one example of a sustainable parking lot. If you have rain gardens, you can use permeable pavement, which absorbs water, opposed to moving it down the street, which could, you know, then flood neighborhoods. Those are, and permeable is actually not more expensive than concrete. It stands up to our weather structures. So helping businesses know what environmental options are available to them, and helping connect the dots to sources for them to get these materials to make it easier.
Thank you, Mr. Jali.
So when we're looking at new businesses and redevelopment of properties in Livonia, to be quite honest with you, to this point, we haven't really encouraged sustainable things like solar panels. We have had some really great buildings being built, but we need to push further in regards to having solar panels and these sustainable technologies incorporated into the buildings. I can't think of one building that has happened in the last six years that's been, like, LEED certified, right? These are things that are important for our community. They will be more important over time as energy becomes more expensive or maybe more in demand. We also have to build out our infrastructure to deal with things like weather, right? We've experienced a lot of, a lot of very large storms. I think we've had 300-year storms in the last four months. Our system's only built for 100-year storm once in 100 years. So determining how to deal with that and approach it appropriately and responsibly is the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
You know, when I think of environmentally friendly, I, I think of bike paths. I would love to see bike paths in Livonia. I think that would encourage more people riding their bike to work. A lot of people live in the areas that they work. I think that is something that we need to take a look into, and I think that the citizens of Livonia would really appreciate that. There's a lot of areas that you can't ride bikes in. It creates less people driving, especially if they're, they only live a couple miles from where they work, they can very easily ride their bike. Then also, maybe some... Thank you. Then we'd also look into, also, I'm sorry, the solar panels. Solar panels on some of the city buildings would be helpful to cut down on costs.
Thank you, Mr. Overwater.
So I'm not an environmental expert. I, I don't know the answers to what is the most important thing that we can do. As I indicated, I'm always going to look to do the thing that does the most good for the most people. But the thing that jumps out at me, and the thing I would be most worried about, is our infrastructure, and to ensure, as Mr. Jali said, that we're prepared for the changes in weather that may be coming. We can't predict the future, but it's certainly, we can see the trend. And no one knows when that trend is going to end, or when it's going to stop, or are we going to get more storms or fewer storms? Is it going to get warmer or colder? We don't know. But it certainly seems like it could continue to get worse, so we need to make sure that we are fixing the problems that we have and preparing for potential problems in the future. I'm all for more trees. I'm all for solar panels and bike paths. I think those are all great things. But if your streets are flooding, I, I think that has to be the first priority.
Thank you, and Mr. Centers.
Yeah, so certainly, I agree with the infrastructure issues that we've seen. It's, it's scary. We don't want to see it increase and people have more problems. I think we do have to look forward to, thinking ahead. By 2035, GM, I think, is only producing electric cars, and I personally drive an electric car. I drive a Chevy Bolt. I like it a lot. There's not very many places to charge here in the city. I have one at home. Otherwise, it would be very difficult. So thinking ahead, also thinking about our facilities, we know that we're going to replace and upgrade facilities in the city as we go forward, thinking, how do we make them more sustainable? How do we make them use less energy? When we've done the bond in the school district, we've done a lot of sustainability stuff. We've reduced our energy consumption quite a bit. And cities and school districts use a lot of energy with vehicles, all the buildings we have, so there's a lot of opportunity.
Thank you, and Ms. Toye.
Thank you very much. We have a committee for recycling within the council. Mr. Donavich serves on it, as well as Mr. McCullough. We've been looking at the recycling program and to avoid some of the contamination that goes on, so we can reuse those products. We're looking at the bin sizes for the city and looking at where the dollars are. There's a lot of grants out there that we can embrace, as well as a good PR tool for it, to educate our citizens better of what, sometimes you get confused, do I leave the cap on? Do I take the cap off? You know, and the tree committee is very important as well in our city, because we've had a lot of, if you will, there's no complaints here, but people that are very concerned when we redo roads that we're taking down a lot of trees. So we've been studying that issue as well, and that's very important to us. The weather certainly, with the flooding going on and the infrastructure and what that means to us is extremely important. Thank you. My time's up, sorry.
All right, we'll now go into the closing statements, and one-minute closing statement for everybody, and we'll start with Mrs. Buzinski.
So one thank you to the chamber for hosting us today. I think we have great candidates, and that's fantastic. If there are things that, I said tonight that you have more questions about, let me know. If there are things we didn't get to talk about, reach out anytime. My phone number is 734-674-0948. My email is kerry.m.buzinski@gmail.com. I want to serve our community. I'm here for any resident who wants to talk at any time, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Jali.
Thank you. So first, I'll say it's been an honor and a privilege to serve you on the city council and to work with many people, many great people on the city council and the city, and all the residents as well. I have a record of 15 years in the city, 15 years of doing work and serving our community. I'm happy to continue that service, and I hope you give me the opportunity to do so. I think we are better together. We've definitely had some issues over the last couple of years in regards to COVID and the weather and all kinds of other things, but I know that we found solutions when we're working together, and we will continue to do so. I'll note that I've been endorsed by the Livonia Police Officers Association and the Livonia Firefighters Association as well, and people from all across the political spectrum. I got those endorsements and that support because I've worked well with others. I've listened and I've collaborated, and wholeheartedly worked with them to make Livonia a better place, and I'd appreciate the opportunity to continue that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, thank you. I spent five years in the Marines, 25 years on the Livonia Police Department. My job was to listen to the citizens, make changes, and make things work. I was a union president for 10 years. I earned my bachelor's degree at Madonna. I raised my family here. My daughters currently attend Madonna. I have an in-depth knowledge of the city. I'm currently on the zoning board. I'm a problem solver. And the city hired me 25 years ago to do a job, and I completed that job. And now what I want to do is I want to work for the citizens of Livonia again, and I want to complete what I've done here. And I want to work for you, and I'm asking you, as the citizens of Livonia, to hire me back. My name is Scott Morgan, and I'd appreciate your vote on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Overwater.
Thank you all for your time today and your questions. As a public defender, I'm used to dealing with difficult, angry clients. They didn't choose me. They probably don't trust me, but I advocate for them anyway. I work for them. Every day, I work with prosecutors, judges, police officers, probation agents, and other stakeholders in the system to advocate for my clients. I fight hard, but I never resort to personal attacks or angry histrionics. I don't accuse those who disagree with me of hating me or hating America. I don't call them names. I talk to them. I try to understand where they're coming from and find a solution. And if we can't agree, we argue our cases and we shake hands after. Sometimes we have a drink. If I'm elected, I will fight hard for all Livonians, regardless of politics. I will listen to every single person who wants to talk to me, and I will have an honest, respectful conversation with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Centers.
Thank you. I want to thank you, Dan, for being moderator this evening, and the staff. Everyone did a phenomenal job. This is my, if I'm elected, would be my fourth time being elected in this city, and it is a great place, and it is such a privilege to serve. I feel like I've really accomplished a lot and worked with a diverse set of people to do that. Because of that, I have a diverse set of endorsements, and so I'm really proud of the work I have done. I'm excited for the opportunities to do additional work at the city level, so I'd really be honored to have your support for city council this year, and thank you once again.
Thank you, Ms. Toye.
Thank you, Chamber of Commerce, and thank all our participants here and in our audience tonight. We have a great city here, and I think you can tell by the passion from all of us in our answers and how deeply we care about this. And every day, I meet someone from Livonia, even when I'm way up north in the U.P. "Hi, I remember your name. It's Toye, isn't it?" And I said, "Yeah, it is." Well, I grew up in Livonia. I'm like, "Oh, dear. Okay, good." Anyhow, our goal is a common one. We need to foster our community and our people who live here, work here, raise a family here, and retire here as well to make it safe, affordable, and have excellent services and great amenities that people have grown to know. So that's why I'm running again, and I'm proud to call this home, and I know many of you are, too. I'm asking for your vote on your absentee ballot and/or on November, that's Tuesday, November 2nd, and together we can make Livonia's future bright. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and Mr. Donavich.
Thanks, Dan West and the Chamber of Commerce for hosting tonight. Thanks to all the residents here and watching at home. Thanks to all the candidates that are also running for city council. I appreciate your guys' inputs, and it's been fun working with all of you so far. I really enjoy working on city council. It's been a pleasure. It's been an honor. I've really enjoyed the people I've met, the things we've accomplished, the things we're going to continue to do. I love Livonia. I, I enjoy meeting the new people I meet every single day, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work hard, and hopefully, if I can have your vote again on November 2nd or your absentee ballot, it would very, it'd mean a lot to me. So thank you so much. My name is Rob Donavich, and I'm asking your vote. Thank you.
All right, that will conclude this evening's Livonia City Council candidate forum. Thanks to each of you for your participation this evening. We wish you all the best of luck as you campaign the remainder of this fall. The Chamber of Commerce wants to thank the audience again for their involvement in the program. We wish to thank Livonia City Television for their efforts to record and rebroadcast this program. It will be available through Channel 8 on your cable system or on Livonia City Channel, city television station platforms in the coming days. Remember, Election Day is Tuesday, November 2nd. That concludes our program. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Have a great night.
Thank you, Dan.